Twenty-third, twenty seventeen, Planning Commission Meeting Order. So first order of business is agenda changes. I think we need to add an agenda item for select board changes to the Heinsberg Town Plan. I would suggest we put that in as new item number three, cover that first, since it needs to be done, and then follow on with Any other changes or additions? Nope, okay. All right, we move on to agenda item two, public comments for non-agenda items, except there is nobody in the audience tonight at the moment. So quickly move on to new item number three, Planning Commission Report for Select Board Changes to Heinsberg Town Plan.
So for those of you who didn't see the email that was just sent out today, in your packet from last week, I mentioned that Select Board is having a hearing on August thirty-first, and that I would provide you with upstairs. I'll go grab them for anyone who wants a hard copy, a track changes version of the town plan, so you can see what changes the Select Board made. That's in the drop, on the Dropbox site now, so for those of you in the digital world, you can grab it there and see it. I think I put a Word, I did, put a Word and Adobe PDF version on the Dropbox site. So if you're used to using track changes in Word, you can open up that one and just cycle through all of the changes very easily. If not, then you can look at the PDF version, and they're just red underlines and strikeouts. I have some hard copies as well, that I forgot upstairs, but I can go grab for you if you would like. According to statute, for those who didn't get today's email, according to statute, the Planning Commission is supposed to submit a report either before or at the Select Board public hearing indicating to what extent the Select Board's changes to your proposal still conform with the state statute regarding the goals for all town plans. There are four general goals and fourteen specific goals in the state statute that town plans all have to meet. And to remind you, we had to generate a report that went through all of those goals, the four general goals and the fourteen specific goals, back at your public hearing last year. So in November of ninth of last year, you had a public hearing. We generated that report, I wrote it, and it walks down all those statutory goals and says, yep, we're doing this, this town plan addresses this, our planning process addresses that. I put some copies of that on the table here. It's on the website, so there are three documents for the public to consume on the website for the town plan. One is the actual town plan language, one is our, the appendices, I guess the maps would count as well, and then the third is that, is that report that was generated last fall for your meeting, your hearing. So, the statutory intent is that you wrote, you wrote a report, you were required to do that, addressed how the plan deals with these statutory goals. Now the Select Board has changed your plan. Did they change it in such a way that it no longer addresses those goals? Well, of course they didn't. You know, they made a bunch of changes. None of them affect the degree to which the plan addresses the state statutory goals. So, so I drafted this report that you have in front of you that says that, and basically says, they made some non-substantive changes, meaning typos, grammar, added some pictures, stuff like that. They also did make some substantive changes, added some new action items, prioritized certain action items in the top priority section that you didn't have. They did change some wording here and there, where, you know, things went from shall do this to encourage to do that. So those are substantive changes. Again, I don't feel that any of those has any bearing on those statutory requirements. And so that's what the draft memo says. The draft memo also lists what, what I felt were, were the substantive changes, so that, you know, we're trying to be transparent and telling people like, well, these are the things that the Select Board did sort of take a different direction on. So I'm happy to walk through those changes if you'd like, because I don't think we've actually taken the time at a meeting to review what the Select Board did to your very special plan that you delivered to them. But that's the list. Most of everything else that's redlined in the, in the Select Board edit version are, you know, we cha, are non-substantive. We changed the word elderly to seniors. We changed elders, yeah, something like that.
Yeah, changed it to elders.
To elders. We changed...
So why don't we just go through them?
The substantive ones?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just...
Sure, yeah.
I mean, we could just go through, I mean, there weren't that many.
Should we look it up?
There weren't that many.
Yes, I can definitely pull that up. Maybe Jeff, you could hold down that orange lit-up button and get that thing going, and I'll plug in and we'll just walk through them.
So can I ask, the changes that they made, are those refutable or not?
Well, anything, they're having two public hearings, and this commission, along with everybody else in town, are welcome to comment, you know, so you could, I suppose, come as a planning commissioner or as a planning commission and say, hey, you changed this action item, and that's, I would like to refute that change. That was a bad change. You certainly have that option. From my standpoint, and you are, you are the check on the guy who just works upstairs, so you should be, you should look through it. In my estimation, I don't think any of the changes they made are deal breakers with the plan. And, you know, this is an iterative process. You are not the only board that gets to look at this. In fact, you are not the board that gets to adopt it. It is the Select Board. So, they do have some sway. So you're welcome to make comments. We are at the end of a very long process. So unless, in my mind, unless they backtracked or flipped something in a real terrible way, we've got a pretty good head of momentum on this. It'd be nice to see the plan get adopted. But I can walk through the changes, and you can decide for yourself which ones warrant comment, or which ones you can just grin and bear. Some of them were positive, I think. There's no question about that. You know, they had some discussion, and they saw an opportunity to improve what you did. And some of them, you know, were policy changes from what you had talked about, or what one of the many committees that helped you draft this talked about, and that was, you know, that's, they are the ultimate policy board up the top there. So, they had a different opinion. Let's see, we want...
Alex, I found, I think, a couple more kind of typo level stuff that I've got a record of that I can pass along.
Yeah, why don't you do that? If you see something more, pass it along. It's funny, I did this, so I did two versions of the Select Board's proposal. One was a track changes version, so that we could see all the changes, and I needed to do one clean version. So, tried to make all the edits in the track changes version, and then I accepted all those to create the clean version. And inevitably, after I had cleaned it all up, there were still a couple of little things. So the more you look at the document, you will, the more you will find things. It'll never be absolutely perfect, I hate to say. Sorry, just fumbling here with my folder structure. Okay, there's the meeting, here's our housekeeping changes, there's the plan changes, Select Board edits. Okay, here's the Select Board edits. Okay, so we have it up on the screen, reasonably in focus. Not showing the whole screen, no. Okay, so I think the first substantive change that I listed in this draft memo, or draft report, was on page seven. And they spent a lot of time talking about page seven, as I, I encouraged them to do. This, this is the top priority actions page of the plan. And you had, I forget exactly how many, I guess we could figure it out by the changes, but I think you had seven or maybe eight. We didn't have a top priority action item from the energy section of the plan, so that was one of their, so the Select Board's tasks was to think about may, which one maybe could be there.
Well, energy never gave us one.
Exactly. I told them that. I said the Energy Committee just never came up with one, and so, you know, it might be nice to have one. And they, and they, and the Select Board picked, chose one. Anyway, they added three, which are in red here, and they added a little, they tacked on a little bit to, on the right side, that first bullet, they tacked on a little bit to that one as well. So constructing the Bissonette Recreation Area, you can imagine Tom Ayer made that suggestion, that that should be top priority, and changed the time horizon as well, from long to short, in the hopes that those funds will come through. And in addition to that, the, the action item from the chapter eight was the maximizing energy efficiency in town buildings and vehicles. The Select Board felt like we had complete control over that, and we ought to take, we ought to keep working on that. And then there was a lot of discussion about something that actually came before you at a previous meeting regarding minimizing impacts on certain natural systems. They had had a disagreement, actually, on, at a Select Board meeting about some lang, language changes that one member had proposed to, to what you had, and they wanted your feedback. So you probably remember, at one of the meetings, we talked about those action items, and it was the consensus of this commission that the language ought to, ought to be revised from what the Planning Commission proposed, to, to mirror the rural area regs, where certain resources you stay away from, and others you, you, you have to minimize your impact on, but that does mean you can sort of nibble around the edges. So, in the process of having what was a fairly long discussion about that, and, and eventually the Select Board did cha, make some revisions, it, it also got elevated to a top priority action item at the same time. So, it was an interesting conversation.
Great.
So that's, that's, those are the changes they made to page seven, the top priorities. Any questions on these?
Can you scroll it up a little bit?
Uh, to see the...
The water bottles.
To see this portion at the top?
No, the bottom.
The bottom portion.
Where the water bottle is. There, thank you.
Oh, right, the water bottles. There you go. So those were, that top priority action item is actually a compilation of four that are related, as you see, and, yeah, they were largely action items that were in your proposal. They tweaked the language a little bit regarding minimize impacts versus keep away all the time, but at the same time, they elevated it to a top priority action item. So it'll be something that both the Conservation Commission's going to get a reminder about. For me, on an ongoing basis, probably annually, my, my plan of attack is, once this gets adopted, to send, and, and actually go meet with each of the commissions that are responsible for items on this, and say, hey, town plan's adopted, your commission has a top priority action item or two, how can I help you? Let's...
Surprise!
Let's work on this. Well, it shouldn't be a surprise, right? Because the, all these commissions helped draft this. They might, they might be a little surprised of what got elevated to a top priority, but, you know, they're all action items. They should be familiar with. So I'll be talking with the Conservation Commission about this one, as well as the Development Review Board, just reminding them to pay attention to those sections of the regs, which they already do. So the next substantive change that I identified was on page forty-six of this track changes version, which I'll scroll to. Don't get dizzy watching the pages flip by. And this is, this relates directly to what we were just talking about. So you can see in action item, if, if the text isn't too small up there, you can see action items five-one-one used to say, keep any new development away from these following things. And that was the, that was the change that certain members of the Select Board felt was too, could be interpreted by an Act Two-Fifty Board as being prohibitive, like, no development in forest, interior forest areas, core wildlife habitat and corridors. When our, when our own regulations say, we discourage development there, but if you need to nibble around the edges, that's allowed, as long as you're minimizing your impact. So the language was changed, to be consistent with our own regs. And similarly, in five-two-one, that same change is made, to use the word minimize. So, you've already talked about this, you agreed, or at least the majority of you agreed, so hopefully this is not news. The next substantive change is on the same page, spans the, the two pages.
I'm sorry.
You want to go back?
Yeah, I just think it's a small thing.
Yep, go ahead.
So, go, just a little, okay. So, Forest Resources is goal five-one, Agriculture's five-two.
Yep.
But five-one-three, you added, you obviously combined something. Create a mechanism to contribute to the town's land preservation fund, and protect agricultural and forest.
Yep, the Select Board read this and felt that it needed to be mentioned there. I explained to them that we were trying to parse, you know, forest and ag, and they said, we don't care. We want it mentioned, we want both of them mentioned in that action item.
Okay.
I, I don't know what else to tell you. I, I don't think that's a substantive change, because the intent is there, it's a, it's a stylistic way of organizing a document, and...
You should have two.
Yeah, well...
But then you're just getting into how you...
They did, they did talk about that in the same way you guys did, about, you know, how often to duplicate action items between different goals, and, and when to try to, you know, be more efficient in wording, and I'm convinced there's no right answer there. You do the best you can.
No, not worried about it.
So the next substantive change is in five-three-three. This was one of the top priority action items that you identified. They kept it as a top priority action item, but they did do a lot of monkeying with the wording, as you can see. As it was originally worded, it really talked about working with land, the land trusts and nonprofit organizations to use our preservation fund to encourage the protection of, of productive ag and forestlands. They, they, I think Andrea commented that, hey, we work with more than just them, we work with landowners and community members, and they, and she also said, we also, we also look at other funding sources, not just our own preservation fund. So most of this wording is related to those changes, sort of broadening the language, making it more inclusive. Again, I don't think it, I don't think it goes back on what the original intent of this action item was. It's just sort of widens it a bit.
We had called that out as a top priority?
I believe so. Let me look back at page seven, because that's my, that's my cheat sheet, is page seven.
Because I'm not seeing it there.
Maybe I misspoke. Perhaps they added it. So I misspoke. Which action item was that, Maggie? No, 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 I didn't misspeak. It's, it's here.
But in the new form?
Yeah, it's an abbreviation.
Okay.
Yeah, so what the header of this page says is, action items listed below have been truncated for, you know, space. Look at the, look at the body of the text.
So they changed, so they changed the one of the body of the text, they didn't change it here.
Yeah, we didn't change it here, because it says, it, it's an abbreviation. It was always an abbreviation. It's still a valid abbreviation of that. You just have to look at the, the body of the text to see the full language. If we had to write everything that they put in here, it would take another page and a half. Most of these are truncated to fit on one page. So hopefully that's not too annoying or confusing. So the next substantive change is on page I can get there without making everyone's head spin too much. They added two new action items under goal six-point-one. So there was discussion about our infrastructure and the maintenance of it, and our, sometimes our inability to plan for that and manage that properly, so that we have some deferred maintenance things happening. We certainly don't want to end up like the city of Burlington, where they have this giant memorial auditorium that somebody forgot to maintain, and now can't be used for anything. So this, they wanted to have a plan for the long-term maintenance of this stuff, and it's a little hard when you don't have a, a Public Works or a Buildings and Facilities Director, but this was their way of kicking both themselves and staff in the rear end to, to make that happen. That's why the second sentence says, ensure there's capacity within the organization to do that. So, that's a new action item, and there was discussion about a statement in the, that was in the plan that you, the draft that you approved and sent to them, which, which was just carried forward from past town plans that said that our gravel pit had enough gravel until 2030, I think. And one of the Select Board members appropriately said, where does that number come from? What's that based on? And so I contacted, I said, I don't know, it's just been in the plan since before I got here. And so I talked to the road foreman, and he said, I don't trust that number, I don't think that's right. I'm not sure what the source was. I think we need to, you know, we'll probably need to figure that out. So this action item was added, so that somebody will hopefully do that. Get a consultant in there, do some test pits and, or soil borings. So that, those are substantive, but I think good additions. The next one is on the same page, and it's this rewriting of goal six-point-two. As it was previously written, and you see under the strikeouts there, it had everything and, to do, and it was exclusive, to hazard mitigation measures, to reduce injury, loss of life and property. And most of the action items still relate to hazard mitigation. Mike Bissonette, former Select Board member, spoke up at one of the Select Board meetings to say, well, what about other public health issues? You know, families and children and so on and so forth. And there was some discussion about the fact that the most recent regional plan actually, for the first time, added a section on public health, where they talk about the opioid crisis and drug use and whole variety of things. And that was a, that was a new thing for the Regional Plant, Planning Commission to work on. So anyways, the Select Board agreed to change the goal to broaden it, to include more than just hazard mitigation, and in the process, also added this new action item to, to factor in public health and affordability issues when discussing municipal business, you know, both in terms of policy decisions, regulations, budget drafting. And to consider adding a public health chapter to the next town plan to flesh out the issue, similar to what the Regional Planning Commission did. I think Mike was interested in maybe seeing that better addressed in this plan. And my argument at that meeting he spoke at was, I think that's a good idea, but I think this plan is a mature document, and to, to, to do justice to that topic, I think, would require a lot of work. And that would boot this plan back, you know, for, for more, for a long period of time, and we're sort of beyond that. Or at least that was my argument. The Select Board agreed, so hopefully Mike is happy with this addition. I never really got to talk to him after the meeting, but that, that's what happened here. Again, I think it's a good addition. I don't, I don't think it changes much. It's just, it's just, you know, more work in the future for you and, and me. The next substantive change was on page sixty-eight. That was a bunch of additional text. You'll see some of it here. The Select, I think Andrea again said, hey, there's no list of, you know, the, the land that we own, the buildings that we own. We should at least have that in there. So this is a list of the buildings we own, and just a, a quantitative number for how many parcels we own in the acreage. Again, nothing, I don't think this, this is, it's a substantive change, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the direction of the plan at all. There's additional language on this page with regard to that gravel pit capacity, but also some revision, wow, this was a non-substantive change, revisions related to the construction of the highway garage, which is underway. Let's see, I think, yeah, I think that was it. The next substantive change was a suggestion Andrea had, which got reflected on page seventy-one, which is up on the screen here. She, she noticed, and was a good catch, that, that the plan didn't mention any of our town cemeteries at all. And so she asked for a list to be created and some text. So you see some text here. I chatted with Gene Minor, who's sort of our resident expert on that, and is slowly passing the torch on to some younger folks who are going to take on all that good historical cemetery knowledge and work. And there's a table up here that just gives the list of the cemeteries and, and where they're located. Interestingly, I didn't realize that there are only three active cemeteries in town. And it's really the village one that's the, the big one. The rest of the cemeteries on that list, there's fourteen of them, are, are sort of historic and not actively, you know, accepting new people.
Do you know if the Cemetery Commission has accepted the offer of the land from the Quinn?
They've, so for those of you that don't know what Barbara's talking about, the Quinn property, which is on Mechanicsville Road, the Quinn family property, when Polly died last year, I guess, the estate's in the process of selling the property, and they approached the Cemetery Commission to say, hey, we have land abutting the town's, the village cemetery. Are you interested in having some of it before we sell this to somebody else who might not be as, as nice as us? And the Cemetery Commission went, did a site visit, and they are interested in, in that little chunk. It's, it's just a little chunk. It's not going to provide the cemetery with a lot of additional land for plots, but it will square off what is a little sort of notch out of the Quinn property that looks like maybe it should go with the town property. And there is a small piece of it that is, that could have, it could be viable for more lots. So they are interested, and they're working through the process of talking to the Select Board about whether the Select Board's is interested, in, in order to make all that happen. Because I, my understanding is that all, I could be wrong. I'm not sure how the statute works with cemetery commissions, but I think the Select Board still has to approve, you know, any, any acceptance of land for the town, even if the Cemetery Commission is all in favor.
Especially if it's being donated.
Come on.
Yeah, that, Barbara, I don't know the details of that. I was under the impression that the Quinns were interested, the Quinn estate was interested in donating it. I don't know, though, if there might be some compensation involved. I'm not sure. Certainly, there's going to be some costs to have an attorney draft a deed, and I assume that, I'm not sure who's paying for that.
Right.
So that's the cemetery additions. Let's see, the next section is a fairly substantive one, and one that I was kind of, I liked, but I understood why they got rid of it. So, let's see, which page do I need to show you? I guess we'll start on page seventy-three. So this is the section of the, the General Government section that talks about our municipal wastewater system and its capacity and where it is. And, and at the end of this section, it, it talks about the fact that the Lake Champlain cleanup is going to require us to do some additional work on this. And the picture on that has been evolving since you, since you saw this language. What we thought was going to be a requirement to remove ammonia, as well as additional phosphorus, now appears to be in question, and the state might not actually require us to remove ammonia. They may only require us to monitor it for the next five-year period, and then based on the monitoring, maybe do that later. It's a little complicated. So, so the language was revised to reflect the current state of that. But with regard to this cool little table, that I was very excited about saying, hey, you know, based on the, the consultant's report, we really have these three options. We're going to simplify it and let everybody know that it's a lot of money, and, you know, here are our options. It's just not that simple. Those options are not as simple as, as I thought they were, because of the fact that we're in the process of getting our, renewing our state permit. And literally, we're having, the, the state had a required public hearing about this upgrade to this, the town's wastewater plan, and during that hearing, it became evident that the Select Board and, and the Agency of Natural Resources needed to do a little more back and forth on, you know, what the requirements were going to be, and what the timing was going to be. And so in any case, because of all that, the Select Board wanted all this specific stuff excised from the plan, and some more general language, which you see at the top here, saying, you know, the renewal of the permits underway, and that's going to provide greater, greater clarity on what the necessary upgrades are going to be. We actually don't really know. We, we still know that it's going to be a lot of money, so I don't want to, I don't want to sugarcoat that. We just not, we're just not sure exactly what components we're going to be required to install.
Makes sense. I see this text here, i.e. millions of dollars.
Yes, they really wanted that included.
Well, I, I can appreciate... Well, I, I can appreciate that. Um, I would rather have something that says, you know, cost estimated between, you know...
Five and 10.
Yeah, you know.
Million.
Yeah, I mean, something, you know, something on the low side, something on the high side.
Yeah.
I mean, when I see millions of dollars, well, I don't know if that's, you know, two, right, cause that's, that's plural, or 10, or 100.
Or 100, right. Yeah, so I think you're, I think, uh, they could have made a slightly, they could have put a range in there, but I, I, their main, their main message to me was, this needs to be changed to reflect the level of uncertainty we have. And that uncertainty means we don't know if it's three or 10. But you're right, it's likely not to be 100 or even 20, um, but it's, it...
But at the same time, it's so uncertain, they also don't want to get locked in. If you say it's five and 10 million dollars and then something changes and oops, it's 25.
God, I don't...
I mean, I wouldn't go like that, but you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't...
Well, that was their rationale, Joe. You could certainly make a comment, you know, that, hey, it'd be nice to put a range in there, but this is where they landed for the, for their hearing. Um, I thought frankly, and I think I gave you the idea, that we were, we were much further along in understanding the, the scope of what we needed to do, be- because of the Aldridge and Elliott Report and the options outlined in it. Um, but this, this permitting process that we're involved with the state right now has made it clear that that, we weren't, we're not as certain as we, as we were, or we thought we were. Um, okay, so, uh, the next change, uh, is on page 76. Where are we here? This was a pretty substantial change. Um, so, this is in relation to some recommendations that were in your proposal for making road width, shoulder and striping improvements to paved roads, um, that connect the village to the rural areas in order to bolster bicycle use and improve safety for non-vehicular users. And then there was another action item that was actually quite similar, um, but wasn't as specific to, uh, just paved roads. And, and just, uh, those roads connecting the village to the rural areas. The Select Board talked about this an awful lot. Um, they asked about the Complete Streets Legislation that passed in 2011 and said, you know, we know we're supposed to be, because of that legislation, we know every time we make a road improvement, we're supposed to assess whether we can, you know, what kind of improvements we can make for, for non-vehicular users. Um, but they, they said, I don't think it requires us to make such changes, we're supposed to assess it and evaluate it. And so they wanted this language to be consistent with the Complete Streets Legislation. Um, and so anyways, these two action items got collapsed into one. Um, the first sentence deals with, uh, and tries to pull from the Complete Streets Language. Um, the second sentence, uh, calls on us to do a better job of identifying, evaluating, and prioritizing which roads we should be focused on. So they had a long conversation about, we can't afford to do this on every road. And if we, if we never budget for it becau- for any road, because we can't afford to do it for all of them, we'll never do it for any of the roads. So they said, we do want to do this, but we're all, we know we're only going to be able to do it on the highest priority roads, let's figure what, let's figure out what those are. So that, I thought that was actually a positive change. And then the third sentence says, um, something very similar to, um, uh, what was going on in the, in the, in what was, uh, struck out. Um, so paying attention to those roads that connect the village to the rural areas as well as, um, those routes, uh, that have the potential for bicycle commuting. So you can assess it on your own, based on the words there. I think it was a, it was generally a positive change. Uh, I, I liked the conversation they had about, um, being more proactive at budget time. Uh, because, I'll be honest with you, what happens currently is, the road foreman says, per the paving schedule, we're due to repave, um, Silver Street, or this section of Silver Street this year. You know, every 10 or 12 years, we, we resurface, cause cracks and all that. So, he comes to the Select Board and says, this is what's on our docket for next year, based on paving costs, you know, per ton cost for asphalt, this is what it's going to cost. Um, what do you think? And every year we do that, there's never a, there's never a, a look to see, wait a minute, is this a priority road for bike and pedestrian use? What would the additional cost be to widen this road by another three feet? So that we can have real shoulders, so that bicyclists aren't biking on a six-inch strip, you know, on the right side of the road after the white line? Um, and the board seemed to be, uh, supportive of, of having the road foreman actually make those additional estimates and, and have us do some planning on that, uh, to identify which roads we really need to focus on. But, it is a substantive change, the language is different.
If you put in a bike lane, do the bikes have to use the bike lane, or can they still be on the road?
No, they can still be on the road. Yep, the, the state law allows, you know, treats bicycles like a normal vehicle, they can take the road, they can take the whole road. Um, and in fact, I, my understanding, I'm not an expert on this, my understanding is, uh, when you are traveling downhill, you know, at a, at a decent clip, I think bicyclists are supposed to take the road, because they're traveling so fast, they're kind of like a car. Anyways, um, yeah, they're not required to be in the, in that area between the fog line and the edge of the road. But, as somebody who was trying to bike to work a little bit this summer, um, that's where I bike, I'm definitely on that side of it, and most bicyclists are, you know, it's the safest place to be. Vermont does have, um, statute regarding the buffer that vehicle drivers are supposed to provide bicyclists when you pass them. I, I can't remember, it's three or four feet now. You know, such that if, if you're driving, there's a bicyclist, you're coming up to a bicyclist, and there's another car in, in the oncoming lane, such that, you know, you're going to pass the bike, bicyclists at the same time as that other car is there? And, and such that you're going to be, you know, within a foot or six inches of the bicyclist? You're supposed to stop or slow down and allow that car to pass so you can swing out. Um, anyway. That was the change in 645 and 646.
Can I use the bike lane? Can you use the bike lane? Can I walk in the bike lane?
Yeah, it's for everybody, it's not just for bikes, it's for...
Just being a smart aleck.
It's not vehicular, bicycles.
It's, it's not technically a bike lane, uh, by VTRAN standards. To have a bike lane and designated as such, I think they want a minimum of four feet, preferably five feet. I don't think we have a single shoulder that's striped to provide that much, um, that much area. Some of 116 has a nice three-foot shoulder painted. Most of our town roads have like a foot, maybe a foot and a half.
So, so the irony is that if you want to call it a bike lane, it needs to be wide, but if you want to service both pedestrians and bikes, that can be any width.
Well, let me clarify, any width of a shoulder can service bo- will service all other users besides cars. But yes, to have it, to have it be classified as a bike lane, it has to be quite wide. Um, yeah, and that's some of what this is talking about. You know, I think, I think we need to bite the bullet and find out how much it's going to cost to do the right thing on some of these key roads. I happen to bike on Shelburne Falls Road, so my own personal interest is, why don't we study and make that one happen? Cause my example is, um, I don't know, for any of you who've ever biked it or driven it, um, uh, both Spear Street and Dorset Street go north-south from South Burlington into Shelburne and Charlotte. And, uh, Dorset Street, um, has very narrow shoulders. So it's kind of like a lot of the road, paved roads in Heinsberg, there's not a lot of room to work on. Spear Street is a designated sort of bikeway, and there's signs and all that. And I don't know how it happened or who paid for it, but it had, must have happened a long time ago. The road is much wider and the, the shoulders are easily four feet, maybe five in some places, on both sides of the road. So I never, as I come from South Burlington, when I bike, I never bike on Dorset Street, I, I choose Spear, cause I, it's, it feels like I'm being, they want me there.
A lot of people do it as a loop.
Right, right, if they're, if they're doing that. For me, I'm just commuting, so, um, I could pick one or the other and I definitely pick, uh, and most bicyclists that I see are on Spear when they're going north-south. Anyway. Um, okay, so the next change is on page 103, we're almost done, there's just a couple more. Uh, let's see here. They made some significant changes in the energy section of the plan, and this was one of them. Okay, so, on page 103, uh, and most of this chapter, as you remember, was written by the Energy Committee, you, so, as, as some of these chapters were. Um, and then you edited it and you toned down a few things and added a few things. The Select Board looked at this bullet here, which talked about large residential developments should be required to have charging capacity for electric vehicles. And there was question about, well, what's a large residential development? Does that mean anything over 10 units? Does that mean single-family homes? Is that for multifamily? Um, so they revised it to, to say, we're not going to require, we're going to work on developing such requirements so that we have some specificity about, um, those projects. Um, my comment to the, to the Select Board during that meeting was, again, a personal example. I live in South Burlington now, I live in a large multifamily building with 89 dwelling units in it, it's got to be one of the biggest ones in the county, I would imagine. Um, and, uh, there's wonderful underbuilding parking, it was built in 2007 or 2005. Um, there's no, if I want an electric vehicle, there's no way I can have one. And I own, it's a condo, I'm not a, I'm not a renter, I own this thing, there's no way I can do it. And I could work with my association to try to have an electrician come in and run stuff, but it's going to be really difficult, um, to ever have an electric vehicle in that unit. Whereas a single-family home, you have a driveway, a garage, you hire an electrician, a couple hundred bucks, you got a, the outlet you need. So, Act 250, um, as a part of the, um, stretch requirements for some of the, um, energy efficiency standards, in Act 250, they, they are now compelling some of those kinds of projects to have facilities, or at least infrastructure, to support, uh, electric vehicle charging. So that's something that we could work on, and that's what this does, is say, we should be working on that. It doesn't compel, uh, that it happen immediately, cause I think there's some, we need to figure out what the, what the capacity is, you know, that sort of thing. So that was one of the substantive changes. Uh, another is right here on the other column. Uh, the original language said, energy-efficient lighting and appliances should be required in all new homes. Uh, the Select Board felt that should be changed or encouraged. Um, they noted that it's difficult to buy non-energy-efficient lighting and appliances these days, um, so...
So it's a...
It's, it's a, it's a painless requirement.
It, it seems like, it seems like it should be, but that was their change. Um, and then they had a lot of conversation, well, maybe not a lot, but a fair amount of conversation about this last suggestion by the, uh, Energy Commission that, that found its way into the chapter, which is that we should support statewide efforts to place a carbon tax on fossil fuels. Um, and most of the board members just felt like it wasn't Heinsberg's place, um, and that, uh, that it needs to be a statewide solution. And, and I think one board member felt it needed to be a, a regional or nationwide solution, like one state can't really go it alone in that venue, so they just didn't think this was an appropriate, uh, suggestion and, and struck it. Uh, the next one, the next two are in the implementation section. The table, that very long table at the end, that gives us who's going to do it and how long it's going to take. Uh, and they didn't change much in here, but they did change the time horizon for two items, I've already alluded to one of them. Um, the, where is it? Oh, yes, so right here. The Bisnet Rec Area, you know, because we have the potential for this gas pipeline settlement money, um, Tom advocated that this go from a long-term goal to finish that area to a short. The rest of the board agreed that it's a priority to finish that up.
Well, what's considered short?
Oh, in our, in our di- in our, uh, header here, it's one to two years.
Okay.
So we have, here we go. Um, we have a little cheat sheet as to what the acronyms represent, who's responsible for what, and then ongoing is just how it sounds, short is one to two years, medium three to five, long is five plus.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then the other change they made in this table was, um, an action item related to revising the road standards, um, which is on page 125. Got to that. At the top here. And, uh, Andrea in particular felt like that was something we'd been putting off for long enough, so that got changed from a long to short. They are actually in the process of adopting new road standards over the next couple months. Um, so who knows, maybe we can even declare victory on that. I'm not sure that those are the be-all, end-all of what their standard should be, but they're, they're something.
Back on page 121.
Mm-hmm.
You need to renumber the action items.
Oh, yes, so that was one of those changes, as I alluded to, oops.
647 is...
Yes, that was one of the changes I alluded to, that, uh, it's hard to do the renumbering in the track changes document, so after I accepted all the changes, I went back through and fixed that. Yes, cause 646 went away, so 647 and 648 become, you know, get bumped up.
Right.
Yeah, that did get, that did get fixed, in the clean version. Anyway, that's the list of the substantive changes. Um, feel free to look at the track changes document, again, if anyone wants a hard copy, I have three upstairs, I just neglected to bring them down, happy to give you those. Um, I may have missed one, I don't think so, I went through it, uh, today and I think the rest of them are either, you know, typographical, grammatical, stylistic, or they are real wording changes that don't amount to anything in terms of real, I don't know how to say that, but are not truly substantive, they're just clarifying. So, with that in mind, you have a draft report in front of you that says, we're good with all the changes the Select, well, I shouldn't say that. It, it says, none of the changes the Select Board made alter our conclusions prev- in the previous report that say we meet the state statutory requirements. You may not agree with all the changes the Select Board made, um, and you're welcome to make comments at the public hearings to that effect. The required report is simply, how does this jive with the state statutory requirements? It, it's, they're fine, there's, we're, we're not, we're not, uh, breaking any of the goals of state statute.
So what are we submitting to the, to the Select Board that says, we agree?
So, so you're, you're, you are required to submit something along these lines that says, it still meets the state statute, you didn't break the, you know, break the statutory requirements. You could also submit actual substantive commentary that says, oh, and by the way, um, we don't think, we disagree with some of the changes you made, or we have some other ones that we forgot to include and we're giving to you. So you, you're, you're welcome to make those kind of, um, comments as well, it's entirely up to you. I didn't draft any, cause I'm, I'm kind of, I'm the administrator guy who would like to see this thing wrapped up, so...
My question, Alex, is, why do all these substantive changes made by the Select Board include, why does all of that go in our draft to them? Everything from here down, it's informational.
I think I, I wanted to do that, and it doesn't have to be there, John, you could strike that, it's not really necess- it's not really necessary.
Saying, we agree.
But, but I thought it was helpful for a member of the public who might look at this report, this is, this report, however you want it written, is going to get posted on the website, along with your original report that goes through how you meet all the state statutory requirements. I thought this might be helpful for the layperson to say, what the heck did the Select Board do? Like, what changes did they make? And if they have to look through the whole document, it's going to be a pain in the rear end. This provides them, I think, the, the bullet list of what the Select Board really did modify in a substantive way.
Well, you do have all of these things in red, in one of the versions that you sent us.
I do.
So if you scroll through, whenever you see red, that's something the Select Board changed.
True, I, I'll be honest with you though, right now, the website doesn't have that version. The, what I, what I had Aaron put on the website is the clean version, you know, the actual proposal that the...
On the website.
On the website. So the general public is going to go to the website, they're not going to see the track changes version, they're not going to know what changes the Select Board made. I'd be happy to put the track changes version up there, I just don't want to confuse people, cause I think the average person doesn't really understand that you did the lion's share of the work, and the Select Board also did some work, but came in at the tail end. All they know is, there's a proposal out there, what does it say? And what, what should I think about it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Fine.
And if, and if people are asking that question, what did the Select Board say? You've got to, to Alex's point, you got a place to go get it, rather than having to open this huge document and scroll and make assumptions, so...
Yeah, I'd like to something.
There's, there's something that's still bothering me and I'm, I haven't defined it yet, I don't know the state statutes. Are we weakening our stand? Are the, are the... Are the state statutes strong enough? I don't know.
Well, so I should clarify. And this report here, Barbara, that was generated last year ahead of the Planning Commission meeting or hearing, walks through the, those statewide goals for all municipal plans. So you can, you can take a look at those. There's a difference between whether the Select Board changes weaken a policy position or a piece of our vision for this community by changing a word like from shall to may or will or, you know, required to encourage. There's a difference between that sort of a change and a change that would violate state statute. State statute doesn't tell us we have to require energy-efficient lighting and appliances in new homes. But our Energy Committee chose to include that language, and the Select Board said, "No, we want to encourage that. We don't want to require that." That was, that's a policy change. The state statute, statutory requirements are not that specific. So you can take a look at them. There are, again, there are four general goals and 14 specific goals. One of the specific goals, for example, is having a section in your plan on childcare and provision of that. So all town plans in Vermont or municipal plans have to talk about that. And that was new as of, I don't know, seven or eight years ago. How you talk about it is really up to the municipality. Like, whether you make strident, you know, action items and position statements, the state doesn't really give you guidance on that. They just say, "You have to address it," and you have to, you know, anyways, you'd have to read the statutory requirements to understand what they're really talking about. And I'd be happy to answer questions, you know, next week ahead of the Select Board hearing if you read through that original report from last year and say, "I don't get the state goal. Like, what's that getting at? Or does our plan really address that?" Just let me know.
Thank you.
The, I will let you know that the Regional Planning Commission staff did, ahead of your hearing in last November, review the plan for consistency with the state statutory requirements and determined that it was sufficient. So your town planner thinks it's sufficient. An independent group also reviewed it and felt it was sufficient. I think that it is, it meets the statutory goals. The question might be, are some of the specific policy initiatives that the Select Board monkeyed with, you know, to your liking? Would you like us to have a stronger statement, you know, go back from encouraging efficient appliances to require them, you know, that sort of thing?
Right.
All right, so I guess we should probably entertain a discussion on this memo and bring it to a vote. Do you want to have items they'd like to see changed here?
I think it looks good.
I'm kind of still stuck on, rather than minimizing impact, prohibiting development as we've discussed that a lot.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was one of the items that, I think Maggie, you were there in front of the Select Board. And, you know, that's the way, that's the way zoning bylaws are written, is to minimize, you know, secondary, secondary resources. And so it was, it was tough to argue that, you know, we should use an outright ban...
Without going back and changing the, what we've just done on the road area zoning. I've got no arguments with it. Looks good.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a little disappointed on some things. I don't, I don't see what the beef is over Energy Star Appliances, but in recognition that, as Alex said, it's tough not to until the whole program gets taken away at the federal level.
That is being talked about, yes.
Yeah. I think it's minor. I think people tend to do the right thing. Does anyone have motion? All right, I'll put out a motion. I propose sending, sending the memo as drafted by our town planner, Alex Weinhagen, on to the Heinsberg Select Board with the Planning Commission's approval of its content.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? All right, so new agenda, item number three is complete. So new agenda, item number four is back to housekeeping changes.
Yes, and you left off at 5.9, 5.9 in the zoning regulations. Accessory apartments, which is a good one. Marie unfortunately really wanted to be here for this one, so I feel bad that...
Well, is there, is there any chance at getting through everything tonight? Or maybe do you want to just put that one aside for when she's here, if she has real interest in it?
Well, that's an opportunity, I mean, that's an option. I mean, you could also just give her a chance to speak her mind after the fact. I think whether she wants to speak her mind is going to depend on whether you are amenable to what is drafted here. Rolf was the one who was tasked with looking into this a little bit more and coming up with a suggestion. Of course, he's not here either. But it's not a complicated thing, the change that's happening here. So if you want to talk about it, and then if there's some disagreement about what's there, then I think, you know, continuing the conversation so Rolf and Marie can have input would be good. But however you'd like to proceed, Joe, there's plenty to talk about. We're not going to get through it all tonight. At least, I don't think we are.
You know, I kind of like the idea of having one contiguous discussion when everybody's here instead of piece-part.
So you're saying set that one aside?
Sorry, I'll speak English next time.
Yeah, so push onward?
Push on.
Okay, I'll make a note that 5.9, set aside for next meeting. Okay, so to help you, guide you along again, there is a document that's titled, "Housekeeping Regulation Revision Summary." It's a seven-page document. It's dated July 24, 2017. If you don't have that, let me know. I think I have extras over here. This is the document that lists all these changes, and then we have to go to the actual zoning regs to read them. But, so, I am on page four of that summary document, and accessory apartments are on there. And the next one is 5.10.3. And now I remember what Maggie was making me do, is get the Word version of this up so that, make sure I wasn't hiding any other changes I snuck in there. Hold on a sec. Okay, so skip forward to 5.9, and then I'll use the track changes feature to go to the next change automatically without me skipping over anything. Okay, so it is, the next change is what I mentioned. So 5.10.3, it's on screen here. Actually, there's more than I can fit on the screen here. This is in the section for Maintenance and Expansion of Non-Complying Structures. And, again, we had talked about this last year, and we wanted to have some clarity about what to do when a structure is demolished and replaced. So there's a difference between, "I have a non-complying camp. It's too close to the lake. I'd like to put a little deck on or a landing. It's going to make that situation a little worse. Can I do it? Can I not do it? We have a process for that." This was trying to speak to more of, "I have a camp. It's on the lake. It's non-complying. I'm tearing it down and converting it to a year-round house, and I'm building a, you know, a beautiful new home. What are my options? Do I get to keep the same level of noncompliance? Can I make it worse? What if I, what if the property is, you know, has lots of areas where I could be completely compliant? Do I have, am I forced to move there?" So this is a, not exactly a small amount of language to try to speak to all that. So here's how, here's what I attempted to do, not as elegantly as I would have liked. It differentiates between, first of all, it's differentiating between non-residential structures and the replacement of those versus residential structures. And our current regs does treat those two types of structures differently. Our current regs provides an opportunity for residential structures to be further expanded and increase the degree of noncompliance by a small amount. Our current regs does not allow that to happen for non-residential structures. I don't know why. It's been that way as long as I've been here, but at some point, somebody said, you know, "We're going to give some dispensation to how, to people living in places, and we're not going to do it for stores and non-residential structures." So this section clarifies that and says, "For replacing, for replacement, we want you to come into compliance when you're redeveloped." But that we, I remember now, you had this discussion about wanting to balance the ability to have economic development, and so it goes on to say that there's, that there is a balance there.
Unless the elimination of such allowances makes continued use of the property and possible...
Exactly. Should the zoning administrator make such a finding, then the continuation of those allowances may be retained if the DRB gives approval.
So if your property is too small, let's say, and you're going to rebuild the exact same house, but it had to be a smaller footprint or something?
Well, wait, we're just giving an example. We're talking non-residential structures in this section only. Residential structures will come next. So for non-resident, so you have a gas station, and the gas station is too close to a setback or whatever, and you want to tear the whole thing down and start over, we want you to comply. But if you can't put the, if you physically can't get a gas station back on that site and be in compliance, then there's an option for you. We're not going to, we're not going to close the door. I think the example I used when we talked about this a while ago was the cheese plant and the redevelopment of the storage building up front that is now a restaurant. And the fact that it's too close to the stream, portions of it are. And they pretty much replaced that structure. I mean, they took it right down to the metal frame, you know, and nothing else. I think we all, I think most people would say, "That was a positive redevelopment project. It made, you know, it was net positive for the community." But if we had forced that whole building to scooch over and be in strict compliance with the regs, they might not have been able to do it. So that was a non-residential structure that this regulation would give some dispensation with the underlying expectation that you are really supposed to come into compliance if it's, if it's possible. So...
Seems to me that the difficult word in what you've written there is impossible. Who decides whether it's impossible if you don't make these allowances? It's the zoning administrator.
It's the zoning administrator, yep.
And on what basis is impossible would the zoning administrator use?
Right.
For example, a gas station, I don't know whether we have any examples that would include that, but business standards, business practice may have changed from the time a commercial institution was existing. They wanted to replace that, and in order to meet the new standards of business in whatever area, they need the allowance. It would be impossible for them to build something to meet the modern, the current standards of business. That might be the number of parking spaces, the number of, the area of the building itself. I know there was discussion about Estes Hardware wanting to have a bigger area because hardware stores today, in order to be competitive, have to be bigger than that original Estes. Now, they were able to do that by expanding within an existing building. But that's the kind of thing that an owner, a business owner, might be arguing, but it is impossible for me to do a new building, a replacement building, without these allowances. I could not be competitive if you held me to only what I had there initially.
So you're right. This doesn't, this doesn't clarify what factors should be considered in that determination. It leaves it entirely up to the zoning administrator with the understanding that anyone can appeal a decision of the zoning administrator.
Sure.
So if you have a suggestion as to what factors should be considered when it comes to the replacement of a non-residential structure like a hardware store or a gas station, I am happy to insert them in there. I don't, I don't know if, we could talk about what all those could possibly be.
Well, I don't know what are the rest of the members of the commission agree with my point there, that the impossible is left to the zoning administrator and then an appeal. And all of the machinations that tend to go along with appeals, particularly when it's based on the decision by one person, the zoning administrator.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, that's the way it's laid out, as are many of the zoning permits and determinations, that there's a single person who considers everything and makes a decision, and then there is a layboard of seven people who can hear an appeal of that. And then there's a court beyond them, but anyways.
I kind of like this the way it is. I did have a couple of comments on residential, actually, one comment, one question. If I look under 510-3, number 5A...
Yep.
The bottom sentence, it says, "Minor increase in the degree of noncompliance pursuant to the review criteria below in section 510-3, number 5." But I'm in 510-3, number 5. So maybe, maybe there's...
Where is that?
Oh, you're right. The numbering's wrong. It should be number six, the residential structures expansion section, which is just below it.
In the question, I should remember this in a different area of the zoning bylaws, and I want to make sure that we either talk about it or it's still there. At one time, we had some issues with mobile homes, you know. Sizes of mobile homes have changed over the years.
Yep.
So you may have a mobile home on a lot. It may be non-complying as it is, and it's absolutely impossible to buy a mobile home of the same size, right? Now. And if I look at, like, A and B, right, well, if the mobile home's bigger, it might indeed, you know, increase the degree of nonconformity. So A, A is not applicable. And, and B, since it says reduces the degree of noncompliance, that's not applicable either. So I want to make sure we either deal with this in a separate section or we think about the wording to allow for upgrades.
So are you... So, are you thinking of mobile homes in one of the mobile home parks? Or are you thinking of mobile homes, landed mobile homes on their own lots?
Right, well, um, I was thinking more of B, the, the, the case, the case that I remember was actually on Mechanicsville Road. Um, it was probably when I served on the zoning board years and years ago, perhaps, um. And it was a mobile home on a lot on the west side of Mechanicsville Road. Um, that they indeed, they wanted to replace the mobile home and they couldn't get one the same size and they needed, I think at the time, a. A variance or something like that, I forget all the specifics.
But what, what's the difference between a mobile home on its own lot like that? And a small stick-built home on its own lot like that, shouldn't they be treated the same?
Well, I mean, I mean, the, the, the difference is, is that if, if you're building a stick-built home, right? You, you have control of your dimensions, you know, how wide, how long, how high, right? Every, you know, every stick-built home is more or less a custom home, even if you're, you're ordering your wall panels.
Mm-hmm.
Right, whereas a mobile home, right, yeah, you can, you can decide, you know, whether the kitchen is in the middle or at the end. There are different models for that, but there's a, there's a set number of, of lengths and whis out there and. If you had a four-year mobile home and the standard was, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the standards were, but. You know, thirty-two feet by ten, right, and you can't find anything thirty-two feet by ten, the, the, the new minimum size is. You know, forty feet by, by twelve, right, and that's gonna de- that's gonna increase the degree of non, non-compliance. This section is no good to you.
So, well, so I'm, so two questions, one, I'm not sure why in that situation that person wouldn't understand that the expectation was that they have to build. A stick-built home to replace their mobile home that better fits the property. But with that aside, doesn't A still cover them? Says the footprint of the new structure, so that would be the new mobile home. Occupies at least a hundred square feet of the original structure's footprint and there is either. No increase in the degree of non-compliance, which in this case there would be. Or only a minor increase in the degree of non-compliance pursuant to that section on expansion. Wouldn't, wouldn't that apply, you'd, you'd come in and say, I am gonna replace the mobile home, it is gonna occupy a hundred square feet of the original one, but I, it has to be a little wider. So, now I get kicked into number six where um we deal with all.
Yeah, I, well, I, I guess, alright, the, the number, the number two section there, um, so A two.
Yeah, A two, I think they're still cu- I think that would cover them, in the same way it would cover, you know, a camp. Most of this was written with, with those lake properties in mind, um.
The only problem with the mobile home park is they're so tight now, how would you do it there?
Yeah, so that's why I asked the first question of Joe, um.
I think we had one come before us.
There is a, that, you did, there, there's a separate section that deals with mobile home parks and setbacks for mobile homes in those parks. And we are, we're gonna get to that, it's in this sec- it's in these housekeeping changes too, and so we do deal with that situation in another section. Uh, yep.
Do we, do we need to define what demolition and replacement means? I know it's me, but I, I know the, like, one of the most ongoing jokes, not about Heinsberg, but about zoning is. Alright, I gotta replace my structure, I'll tear it down. And I'll leave one of the end bricks of the foundation and I'm not rebuilding. Because I've left one stone of my foundation.
Yep.
Do, do we need to get into that level of specificity or? You know?
So, if you look on the screen there, number three says, starts this off by saying. Uh, nothing in the regulations shall be deemed to prevent normal repair, normal maintenance repairs and additions or remodeling. To non-compliant structures, such that you don't increase the degree of non-compliance. So, we've always said, if you wanna, you know, re- replace half of your home or take off a porch and put it back on or whatever, you can do that. Then it goes on to say, new language, see below for guidance on complete demolition and replacement of non-compliant structures. I think, I think you're right, I think that actually a definition of demolition and replacement would be a good addition to the definition section. Cause there, there, there could be that, I, I think that, I think the, the average person would read that and understand what it meant.
Sure.
But it's possible that somebody could try to game it and uh if we had a definition that, that, you know. In lay terms said, complete demolition and replacement also includes, um, you know. Uh, leaving one stick or leaving, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Leaving a portion of the foundation, um, however you wanted to find it, maybe you could help draft that definition.
More than forty-nine point nine percent of, you know, the structure.
It could be a percentage like that, true.
You've quantified it, right, so somebody's got something that, there's a definition to it. Yeah, so, you know, I've just, I, I know people that have done that. I've taken it down to the foundation and I left one thing and so therefore I'm okay. And I don't have to come into compliance now.
Didn't we also discuss whether someone chose to replace or because of some fire or? Some damage to the building, a tree fell on it.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
So, earlier in this ch- in this section of the regs, and there's no changes to this.
So, you don't make a distinction.
Number two, it talks about when it's destroyed or damaged by fire, collapse, explosion, blah, 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 it can be restored.
In a certain time period.
Within a certain period of time, uh. So, this new section is really dealing with replacement, um.
A choice the owner has made.
And it, well, it's replacement for any reason. That in, that includes, um. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to think and talk at the same time, let me look at it.
So, I'll give you an example, it's not residential, but you made the comment about, um. The, the public house.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So they, they tore that building down to the metal frames, down to the studs, if you will. Is that replacing the structure?
It's a good question, I don't know.
Or is that just remodeling it and putting up different walls?
That's where a percentage would have, you know, the definition's gonna have to be a good definition, cause if you say. Replacing more than seventy-five percent of the structure, the, the public house example is a good one. The frame's still there, you certainly replaced more than seventy-five percent of the structure, it's pretty much, you know, ninety percent of it, but. But the frame didn't change, you know, so what do you have?
Yeah, where do you differ?
I would, I would argue against that, the foundation remained, there's a whole nother level below the public house. That's still usable, someone could come in and put some activity down there. And also, what re- what are we talking about? Defining how much of what was there we're replacing, the value of what was there or the square footage?
Hmm, yeah, those are all good questions.
Well, maybe, maybe neither.
Maybe neither.
But to speak to John's original question, the, this section, um, doesn't hold people to a different standard, whether it's a. A conscious choice to demolish their building and replace it. Or if it gets whacked by the next tornado that comes through town and they have to replace it, it, it's the same. And, and people have that option. And they've, they, yeah, yeah.
I, I think if we're gonna say fifty, anything forty-nine percent and up to that amount, then you're just replacing it. Uh, forty-nine percent of what, square footage?
Or value.
Or value, and I would argue that. The building that was there, that is now the public house.
Mm-hmm.
More than. Forty-nine percent was left, given the foundation, the steel structure and the roof structure and the roof. Was all left. The, what was taken down was the metal siding and the metal framing, the light gauge metal framing that held that. Siding, there wasn't anything else in that building, uh, there was probably some lighting, minimum, because it was a warehouse. So what was taken down physically looked like a lot, but value-wise. I, I would question whether or not that much was taken down for that particular building.
Yep.
Um, if it had been another part of the cheese factory where there was equipment, where there was lighting, where there was plumbing, heating, air conditioning. And all of that was taken out except for the frame and the roof. Then I think you would have a case that's saying, oh, you're. You're gonna be replacing way more than fifty percent of what you had, but not with that particular building.
Or maybe it's.
Or maybe it's manipulating the foundation, right, so.
Right, the old police station is another.
I tear my house that are burnt down, my footprint's the same.
I think we could spend the whole meeting on the definition of demolition.
We should think about that, that's all I'm saying.
I'm making a note, we, we should have a definition, I, I think it's always important to remember what, what that definition or what we're, how it's gonna add to. The interpretation of the regulations, so our regulations have always allowed people to remodel. Make it, put on additions, make repairs, do normal maintenance of non-compliant structures. We're not chang- this, this housekeeping change isn't changing that, we're still allowing all that to happen. And we're simply trying to be clear about what happens when you completely replace a building. So, maybe you could argue in the public's house case that it, that, yeah, it wasn't a replacement at all, you know, because uh they were just.
Remodeling.
Remodeling. Um, but, eh, once you get kicked into the complete replacement, um, section that's been added here. It, it, it still gives you opportunity, especially for residential structures, right? You, you're still allowed to do all these things, so anyways, um, definition, got it, we'll work on that.
In the case of the, um, the Quick Stop. That most of it burned.
Yep.
You were here then when that process.
Yeah, well, they leveled it, it's hard to, it would be hard to argue.
They had to take it down completely, at least to the slab.
Right.
What got put back there in terms of its original footprint?
It was on top of a portion of the original footprint and was then expanded beyond that.
It went beyond that in terms of footprint, square footage.
Yeah.
That got enclosed, was larger.
But it also, it also complied.
Yeah.
The, the portion of that project that was not complying, that got special dispensation, wasn't the building footprint, it was the front yard parking.
Back parking.
Um, and that's what this section tries to indicate, that, um. For non-residential structures like the Jiffy Mart, you should be, you should be coming into compliance with whatever new regs have happened, you know, however you're not complying. But we still give you a conditional use review way to get out of that, if it would make the use of your property impossible, hence the. Whether we need to define impossible. Uh, I think that that's a takings issue and, and I think that, you know, from a, from a, from a legal standpoint, it's a good idea to always have an out. Um, and not, um, not have a regulation that could be construed as a taking of somebody's property. Um, even in a non-compliant section, but I, eh, but I think this language at least provides guidance that the intention is. You come into compliance and that would hopefully inform the DRB's decision that, you know, what's, what's really. How impossible is it for you to meet this standard, is it, is it a convenience thing in you, in terms of like your front yard parking? Is it a necessity, is there some state requirement, you know, fire safety that, that makes it, you know, that were, compels you to, to not come into compliance? Or is it just a preference?
So, let me just, this is for my own clarification, so on residential properties.
Yes.
If I have a non-compliant structure, I don't know, it's too close to the lake.
Yep.
Uh, I can expand that, I can remodel it, I can do my heart's content to that building without worrying about coming into compliance, it's only if I demolish it, whatever that is. And rebuild, do I need to then come into compliance?
Um, sort of, uh, it, you can do anything to that structure, eh, as long as it doesn't make the non-compliant situation worse.
Okay.
So if you're too close to the lake, but the backside of your house away from the lake is fine and you wanna add on that side, you just come in and get a zoning permit, you're not increasing anything.
Okay.
But if you're too close to the lake and you wanna put a deck on the lakeside and get even closer to it, which a lot of people like to do. Then, um, you're not replacing anything, so this, this new language doesn't touch you. But the old language below it still touches you, right, so the old language, um, under number six now. Is what we've always had for expansion of residential structures. So, these four criteria, A, B, C, D, are applied in a, in a conditional use public hearing. So, A has always been, has been interpreted to mean, you can, you can do something, but it has to be the least practicable, practicable. Uh, increase in the degree of non-compliance and, and that's manifested itself on these deck questions in the sense of. You've proposed a deck across the entire backside of your house that's ten feet wide. We, we feel that's not as, you, we feel you could do better, you know, minimize, you know, shrink the deck. Um, we've also had cases where with, um, B, uh, you wanna, you wanna, you've got a house. That is too close to the side setback, to your neighbor, you now wanna add a second story to that house, you're not getting any closer to the side setback, but you're increasing the volume of the structure within that setback. We feel that's an increase in the degree of non-compliance and the neighbor comes in and says. I'm never gonna be able to look at the lake again, cause they just, they're gonna block my view, or I'm, I, they're gonna put me in shadow, I'm never gonna get sunlight again. And this, this section allows the, the DRB to say, change your plan, or we're denied, or. Whatever.
Okay.
So feel free to stew on this some more, again, I don't feel like this wasn't, I don't feel like I did a really elegant job with this language, I had a little bit of a hard time. Um, but I did put pen to paper and try to say, okay, if you've got a, if you've got a little, you know, footprint here and you wanna expand it here and your lot is this big, you know. How much of your original footprint should you have to overlap and? So feel free to do the same exercise if that helps you at all.
It, it clarifies what my concern was and I, and I, it clarifies it for the better. You know what I mean?
Okay.
I, I, the example that I gave you was the one where they would manipulate, say, well, if I demolish and rebuild, I'm gonna have to do all this stuff. But I can add on to my heart's content, so I'm gonna rip it down and leave just three parts of my foundation, therefore it's a remodel and off I go.
Right, they still have to come through the review, yep.
Right.
Would you like to move on?
Yes, done.
D?
Yes.
If someone wants to put a deck off their, say, their bedroom, does that, is that what this covers?
Um. Yeah. I don't, I don't know why this, I don't know why D's in the regs, I've always thought that was a weird provision. Uh, but yeah, it means that if you wanted to cantilever, you know, a second floor out over the first floor and have it be bigger, whether it's exterior space or interior space. You can't do it. We don't let you do it, I don't know why, I, I, I've never questioned it, it's been in the regs since I've been here, um.
Well, I ask because a friend talked about her neighbor in Thistle Hill, planning on doing just that, putting a deck off their bedroom.
Mm-hmm, so you can do that if you're a complying structure and you meet the setback, this is only for non-compliant structures, um, that, that you can't.
I, I think it's like Jeff's example of, of, of testing demolition, it's a testing, so, so if you write your, if you write your bylaws and, and say, well, you know. You can only cover so much area, you can only come so close to your, your neighbor, right, and you have no other protections and. And, and, you know, the guy says, look, my, you know, my footprint, you know, my, my actual basement footprint isn't changing. I'm just extending my, my second story out, you know, to like double the size of the footprint and hang it over the lake, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might have been the thinking. So the next section is five eleven, it's on the same page here, easy to find, existing small lots. And what did we change here, um? So this is a minor change, but, um. Mitch brought this up, I think, where we say that if you have an existing small lot of a certain size, we're not gonna deny you the use of that property, you're still allowed. we're not going to deny you the use of that property, you're still allowed to use it. You may need to come get variances for setback things and all that, but it, but we're not going to restrict you from using it. The note, uh, is new language to say, with, but, you still have to meet the use-specific requirements regarding lot size outlined elsewhere. So what that means is in the contractor's yard section of the regs, and the cottage industry section of the regs, we say, this is a special kind of thing, and you got to have a bigger lot to make these things, to do these things, like a contractor's yard where you have maybe a couple excavators, a bulldozer, dump truck. And, uh, Mitch thought that the way this existing small lot section was written, um, it could be construed to say, any of the lot, any of the lot size requirements elsewhere in the regs, not just in the, the general minimum lot size requirement, um, could be exempted for these existing small lots, and therefore you could have a contractor's yard on a quarter acre lot, even though our regs say contractor's yards have to be on three acre lots. So this just clarifies that for specific use, minimum lots those requirements, you don't, you don't have a get out of jail free card if you have an existing small lot. Does that make sense to people?
It does.
Okay, good, because that's not a huge change, but clarification. Next is, oh yeah, I'll go up here and do it this way, if you want to skip anything. Existing small lots. All right, so five eighteen five on your summary. This is, again, just some clarification language about when temporary structures need a permit and when they don't. And what it's clarifying is that, um, if, if it is in fact a temporary structure, and you're putting it up for the summer and taking it down, you do not need a permit.
So I'm good throwing up a TP?
Yep, yep.
Fantastic.
And if it's going to be up for more. I didn't either, and my two new staff members corrected me and said, if you read the regs, it says you need a permit for, let's see. Temporary of a hundred square feet, um, oh, no, you're right, Dennis, that should be revised. It should say temporary structures of more than a hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Not a hundred square feet or more, sorry. You're, you're right, I'll make that change. The definition of a structure in the back of the regs says more than a hundred square feet. I always thought it was a hundred or more, but I was corrected. I'll make that, I'll make that change. I even argued that point with Mitch and Suzanne, and they're just like pointing at the regs and said, you're wrong. How dare you, new person? So any questions on that one? Again, just sort of a simple clarification.
Does this get into the discussion we had a couple of meetings ago about tiny houses and, you know, houses on, on wheels that are not connected to, uh, a town sewer or a town water service area?
It's, it's not designed to address that situation. I, I think we do that elsewhere in these housekeeping changes, not in this section.
Okay.
Okay, so moving right along, uh, the next one from the Track Changes World is... Where'd it go, where'd it go? There, 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 there. Oh, yeah, it's just right on the same page, um, five nineteen two. What section is this? This is, oh, so here, where we got to the place that you were asking about, the mobile home parks. Um, so there are a lot of changes in this section. Hopefully the summary, um, and, you know, gives you some clue as to what's going on in here. The intent is to simplify the language with regard to when a zoning permit is needed, uh, to replace a mobile home, and also clarifies, um, when conditional use and site plan review are needed for changes to the overall park. And it, what it also does in relation to your conversation of a moment ago, is it creates a flexible setback requirement for the replacement of homes, um, in these three existing parks. And, and, um, the situation that Joe mentioned is, is one we bump up against a fair amount, where people have a nineteen sixty-two mobile home, it's fine, it's, it's, it's time to be replaced, they get a nineteen ninety-two mobile home replacement, and they can't, it's wider, they can't get it at the same width that the older one was, and so there's, um, there's got to be some dispensation. The reason there has to be some dispensation for these interior setbacks within the mobile home park that we've had in our regs for a while, is that the statute, the state, um, state statute requires it. So what the state statute says is, um, you, you can't have regulations that would have the effect of, um, prohibiting someone from replacing their mobile home in a park. You, you just, you have to, you have to, you have to let that happen. They say you're allowed to have setbacks, interior setbacks, you know, home to home or whatever, in the park, but they can't have the effect of prohibiting the replacement of mobile homes. So, um, we've sort of finessed this for a very long time, and this, these changes, um, let's see, where are they? Uh, section five point nineteen point eight and point nine. Those revisions are designed to stop the finessing, or at least make the finessing transparent. So it sets up a, it sets up a setback requirement for new mobile home parks. You know, if you're going to lay out a new mobile home park, you don't have this flexibility, you got to meet these setbacks.
So the person living next to the person that's making the trailer bigger, now they have less area to walk around the trailer, they have no say, right?
No, they, they don't.
They don't own the land.
They're not the landowner, uh, but what this does is, is it outlines what the setback ought to be, says twenty feet from one dwelling to another in this new section, uh, but then it allows that to be, um, it allows it to be smaller if, if there's, you know, no other way to replace the home.
So, so what happens if I have a, I don't know, a ten, a ten lot mobile home park? I'm the owner of it, and, you know, I'm, I'm designed, I fit those smaller sized, well, you know, it was built in the sixties, and I got the smaller size, and I got my ten lots. And now here we are, and, and nobody makes them that big. When does it kick in to where I've got to replan how many lots I can have in that park, based on the new size of a mobile? You know, now I can't be a ten lot, I'm, I'm a seven lot. Because, you know what I mean?
I do know what you mean. We've, we've never, we've never crossed that, that line, um, previously, at least in the time that I've been here. Um, and under these regs, you potentially never would have to unless you physically couldn't fit them. You know, you obviously can't have homes that are overlapping each other. This, this new section would allow the zoning administrator to reduce the setback between two mobile homes to nothing, or to one foot, or.
And I asked that because of where Dennis is going, yeah. You're just going to get squished, and.
Yep. Well, again, the, the state statute's very clear, you can't, you can't have the, the, the effect of, 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 uh, not allowing that replacement. The fact that there may be other codes that, that folks have to comply with fire, fire code wise, um, might preclude that, I, I, to be honest with you, I haven't done the research on that, so I, I could look into that. Um, maybe there is an absolute minimum that should be written in here, like, you can reduce it, but per fire code, it has to be at least this, I, I don't, I don't know.
I was just, it was a question, more than a, we have to outline that, but.
Looking at.
Finding out about.
Okay.
I mean, we got into the whole distance between buildings when, when, uh, the area was developed where Kenny's drug.
Right, yeah.
Of that, between the buildings there.
Yep. Yeah, and there was fire-rated, uh, materials used in order to have them that close.
Something a little more substantial than most mobile homes.
Something way more substantial, yeah.
Well, I was.
Uh, okay, so I'll check on that, check on minimum separation distances between homes. Oops.
I was on page, on page ninety there, under the, the regulations that address setbacks in mobile home parks. Uh, parentheses number three, from an accessory structure to an unassociated dwelling unit. By unassociated, we mean not.
Not accessory to.
Not accessory to mobile home A, but rather from mobile home B, which is next door.
Right, yep. An accessory structure has to be accessory to something. It would be accessory to the mobile home, and this is saying you have to stay ten feet away from, uh, that shed, has to be ten feet away from the neighbor's house.
From your neighbor's mobile home.
Yeah.
That's what that unassociated.
That's what, that's what that was.
That's what the unassociated.
Yes, that's what that was intended to mean. So it creates a special setback for accessory structures.
But the accessory structure could be a foot away from your mobile home.
From the, from the, from the, from the principal mobile home that it is accessory to, yes.
Right.
Yep. So, you, you know, you can think on this, the setback stuff, and I'll check into that minimum distance. Just know that there's other stuff going on, other changes going on in here. So for example, in section five point nine point three, um, we, we had a discussion about, uh, whether non-mobile homes could be in mobile home parks, and, um, the Affordable Housing Committee wanted the regs clarified or changed to allow for that. Uh, so this, this new section does that, uh, by saying you can, you can put in these new Vermont things, you can put in these cottage homes, tiny homes. You, you can put in.
The parks don't have their home association rules and.
So the park is owned by a landowner, and that landowner has their own rules. So nothing we write is going to trump what the landowner allows.
So they might say you can't.
This would allow, um, the owner of the Mountain View Mobile Home Park, which is the housing foundation, um, to, to be able to say, hey, we want to allow you tenant to replace your home with a, what is one of these Vermont modular things, and, and we've, and Heinsberg is okay with that. Like, you're not going to run into a zoning issue, um, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
It's like that one that's in Williston.
If anyone's, uh.
Williston Woods.
No, Old Creamery Road.
Oh, Old Creamery.
The trailer park.
Mm-hmm.
Right, as you enter the park, there's now a modular house.
Yeah, I've noticed that.
It surprised me.
Yep. So this would just allow for a landowner, an owner of a mobile home park, to, to, to ma, to allow for that to happen. So that's a change, uh, that's not a setback-related one. And this change here in number two, uh, well, what does it does? It, it talks about, um, when you have to come for conditional use and site plan review. And so we, that, that was never quite clear in the regs, or I didn't feel it was quite clear, so there's some new language in there defining what substantial alteration means, um, and so on and so forth. Any other questions, requests for more research, or suggestions on this section? The next one's fun, if you want to take the time to do it. I don't know when you want to cut this off, Joe, you're at nine eighteen.
Yeah, I don't. I'm getting kind of weary. I don't have any money else.
So would you like to stop, or would you like to move on to camping?
Let's finish the page.
Okay, camping it is. I said it was fun, it is. Or at least I thought it was interesting when I was drafting it, with Mitch's help. Okay, camping. So, uh, section five point twenty has been in the regs for a long time. Uh, as you can see, there's a lot of red in this proposal, so we're changing quite a lot of the language. There's the original language down at the bottom there. So what this section did in the past was, um, a couple things. It's laid out specific, um, regulations for campgrounds, we don't have any, we used to. We used to have campground on Lake Sunset off of Anthony Lane or Anthony Road. Mike Anthony's family used to have a campground down there. Um, so anyways, there were regulations for campgrounds, but then it also, interestingly, had, um, some language that dealt with just plain old camping, like, not on a campground. Uh, and that has, that has come up in the last five, six years or so with, um, folks on farms. Uh, Full Moon Farm in particular, had a farm worker who wanted to camp on the property, and that was sort of part of the compensation, compensation package, was the ability to put a little RV out there and live on the farm. Um, and there was some question that came up about, well, how are you, can you do that? And for how long? And do you have to have a septic system, and so on and so forth? Anyways, you guys talked about this, I know it was a long time ago, so you may not remember, but last year you talked about this, and this is what you came up with. You basically wanted there to be, um, cutoffs that said, hey, if you're camping for, um, you know, a couple months on the property, like your mom or dad's come up, and they're parking their RV, and you're parking in your driveway for the summer, you don't need a permit for that, just go ahead and do it. And, um, but then you also said you wanted to say that, uh, if you're going to do that for ninety days, three months to a half a year, you really need to get a permit for that. Um, and so that's what it says. And then you also, I believe, wanted me to draft it such that you couldn't do it for more than six months. Um, you know, a hundred and eighty days, you just, it wasn't allowed, unless it was incidental to a construction project, um, you know, that sort of thing. So that's what it says in five twenty point two. Um, there's some clarifying language on some other matters in here.
So if you have five twenty point two, which says, you know, you, you can, you can camp for less than ninety days, right, or you can camp between ninety and one eighty with a permit.
Yep.
What extra is gained in five twenty point one by saying, well, if you have a camping vehicle and you park it in a, you know, a spot where it's not readily movable, that's a dwelling.
Yeah, it's a good question, that's old language, maybe it doesn't need to be there, hmm.
I mean, I would think five twenty two is saying, park it anywhere you damn want, follow these regulations.
I know what the intent of that old language in five twenty point one was originally. It was, it was to make it very clear that the moment you take the wheels off and hook it up to your, uh, you know, give it a little foundation or something, you just made a dwelling, it's, you were not going to call it a camp.
But if you did that next to the driveway, it's not in a hard to move spot, you can put the wheels back on and break the pipe.
Well, Joe, your point is that it's just not necessary language anymore because of the rest of the section? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what I'm saying.
I, I think you're right. I think it is kind of superfluous. Because we are prohibiting camping for more than a hundred and eighty days, period.
I mean, certainly the, 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 the front part of five twenty point one that says, you know, you can have an, you could park an unoccupied camping vehicle on your property is still valid.
Well, here, let me, let me jump to the definition section, don't get dizzy, um, and see how we define camping vehicle, because I think we have a definition. And I think I changed it a little bit, so there it is. So it seems pretty clear from that, that, you know, once you do take the wheels off and fix it in the ground, and it's no longer meets the definition of a camping vehicle, right? In which case, what you just said is right, we don't need that section in five point twenty, because it won't even meet the definition anymore.
If your in-laws have a motorhome, they go to Arizona during the winter.
Yep.
They come up to your house, park in the driveway, they got to get a permit, if they stay there for the summer.
If they stay there for more than ninety days, so three months.
And what would be the re, and get the permit, and they might now get the permit.
Well, maybe it's just a way to say, okay, you're starting at this date, and when's your end date going to be?
Yeah, I think that was what we talked about, that you guys felt that so many people do. Yeah, I think that was what we talked about, that you guys felt that so many people do that, you know, a month, a couple of months, whatever. We don't even wanna have those people walk in the door. We, you know, we just want them to do their thing. But if you're gonna be doing it for longer, we want there to be an administrative process such that the zoning administrat- do they have to come in front of the ZA, and the ZA can say, did you know that five twenty point three has these requirements? Cause five twenty point three says camping for any duration. You gotta, you gotta be responsible for the sanitary disposal of your wastewater. Um, you gotta meet all setbacks, you know, there can only be so many camping units. It's just a way to get them in the door. It's not meant to be a, a way to deny them that opportunity, but rather ensure that they're meeting the requirements. Whereas, you know, those shorter duration ones, they still are supposed to meet these requirements, but we're, we're probably not gonna pay much attention.
I think a lot will be heard to police, but.
It's all gonna be neighbors.
I think everybody's gonna be there.
It's, it's all, it's all gonna be neighbors.
I've got an RV and I'm renting it out to.
Ju- just like, blah, blah, blah. Just, just like a lot of our, just like a lot of our zoning, it's gonna be the neighbors. They've been there for, you know, living there the whole summer, and we can look at the regs and say, hey, they're allowed to do that without a permit. And then if they say, well, but they live in there for the whole year, then you can say, oh, wait a minute, I'll go look into that.
So, so there's a definition for camping vehicle, that's, that's five twenty point one, says camping vehicles. Five twenty point two is camping, is their definition for camping, which is more than being in a camping vehicle. It could be in a tent.
That's true.
Be under a tarp.
Good question. Let me zoom back. I don't think there is, actually.
I didn't see it. I mean, it, it seems like it's the more general case. You can be in a camping vehicle, or you can be in a tent, or in a hammock, or.
Right, or on the ground.
With a piece of plastic over you.
So we have definitions for camp, that doesn't apply in this, to this section, that's like a, uh, lake camp. We have a definition for campground, and we have a definition, that, definition for camping vehicle. We do not have addition, definition for camping, so that would be another good add. Um, five point twenty, and whatever section the defin- what is it, definitions.
I don't know what camping means.
All right.
Well, just a basic one that says it includes the use of a camping vehicle on a property as well as tents.
So I could theoretically pitch a tent in my driveway for ninety days.
Without a permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, your neighbors might think you're weird.
Yeah, but, yeah. You know, but day ninety one, I better get a permit.
It's under a hundred square feet. You shouldn't worry about it.
You don't need a permit, but there's still a camping, hold on, that may be part of the definition we need to add.
This would be awesome.
We're, we're done here.
Yeah.
We're done.
Yeah, I agree with Dennis.
So, add a definition and, uh, delete.
And my kids wanna go camping in the backyard, I just wanna know.
Now I threw all of this. I keep coming back, where, where are the regulations for tiny houses? Or Vermont's, or Irene, whatever they're called.
I read something today.
Cottage homes, what? Where do we say how long those can be occupied?
Okay, so I.
And what regulations?
I think I saw a little bit of that in the definition of camping vehicles, and we were on that, so we're not, it's not new territory, since everybody else wants to stop, um, hold on.
Because those other.
So.
Those other items are actually mentioned in five nineteen, mobile homes and mobile home parks. There's a reference made.
There's a reference to tiny homes.
Encouraging, we, uh, encourage, blah, blah, blah.
Yep, so in the definition of camping vehicle, which is up on screen, it specifically excludes small dwelling units on wheels, for example, tiny homes. So in the camping section, we're trying to say tiny homes are not camping vehicles.
Controlled.
Um, let me look and see if we made any changes to the definition of dwelling or structure.
I think they should be.
Yeah. So I can park a tiny home.
They got whe- they have wheels on them.
Accessory structure.
No, it's no different than a motor home.
Right, yeah.
A trailer, it's just fancy.
No different than a trailer. In fact, they're being built on trailer flatbeds.
You take all the axles off it and you put it on a slab and.
Right.
You're not, you're gonna quickly move that.
Wait, so you're saying you want to give tiny home, you want tiny homes on wheels to be considered camping vehicles?
Well, are they staying on wheels? I mean, they're not put, it'd be different if it's a tiny home and then they hook a deck to it and.
Yeah. I'm still looking here, hold on. Structure.
I would, I would say we move on to the minutes.
Okay, make a note, John, that we need to get back to this. Um, cause there's a definition of structure, I don't think we have tiny homes in there. I know, I know that.
There's one for dwelling unit.
Yeah, I don't think it dealt with that. I, I'll just tell you briefly before Joe ta- moves us forward. Our interpretation upstairs has always been that a dwelling unit is a dwelling unit is a dwelling unit, it doesn't matter how big it is. So if it's a tiny home, or a McMansion, or a nice little, you know, conservative house, we consider it a dwelling unit. The only time that that would come into question is if the tiny home never, stayed on its wheels.
Well, I, you know. And then it's like a trailer, then it's like.
You know, I, I would, I wanna move on in minutes, but I would say one thing. Right, i- i- if, if I were to, to pinpoint a de- a difference between a tiny home and a, and a camping vehicle, right? A camping vehicle is designed for temporary habitation. It's not designed for winter in a, you know, a northeastern climate. It's a, it's a thin wall, marginal, marginal insulation, if any, meant for light towing, right? Whereas, a tiny home, right, is built with, you know, stud, you know, stud thicknesses and insulation, right? That may not be world-class, but is meant, right, to shelter someone in the depth of a northeastern winter.
Good differentiation.
I agree with your distinction there. I just don't think we address how we deal with tiny homes and, uh, Vermont modular homes and Irene cottage homes.
Yeah, so basically, John, you're saying.
They're not in this category.
Why don't we make, have a definition for each of those, right? Since we use the terms.
Not only a definition, but what rules apply. You know, do, do they get treated like a permanently fixed building with setbacks?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so forth.
Yeah.
Do we say that in our regulations?
We don't, we don't have to, because they are, they, they occupy a fixed space on the ground, they are a dwelling. It's only when they're on wheels that, that it becomes a question, is what I'm saying. I mean, we could say it explicitly, but we've never had to, because there's.
Okay, so if it's on wheels, then it falls into the category of a mobile home?
Well, no, cause mobile homes aren't really on wheels either. They're on a chassis, and then they're installed and there.
If they're on wheels, it's really a camping vehicle.
Then, then are they camping vehicles then? Even though they're built, they're, they're different. Joe defined two different categories.
Mobile homes are not.
No, I'm too blameless.
But he distinguished between a camping vehicle being something not really that you wanna spend the middle of the northeast winter in.
Yep.
Whereas a tiny home, you would.
Good.
Yep.
But, no, I, I get your point. I think if it's, if it's on wheels, it's a camping vehicle. And you don't want it parked in a driveway, or, you know, if you have it in the, in the mobile home park, you probably take it out of the wheels. You set it up, you hook it up, and there you go. If it's on the wheels, then it's a camping vehicle, and it falls under a camping vehicle.
Maybe it's an accessory structure.
And so fine, if you left it on the wheels in the park.
Motion to approve the minutes. Okay, you can look at them first.
You have a note that we're gonna discuss this next time.
Yep.
All right, so minutes of July twenty sixth. So I, I had one thing in section five point one point one, number two, I think, um, let's see, one, two, third line. So currently limit in size, it's probably limited very minor. And then I, then I just got a chuckle later on, something about animal house, and.
Yeah.
I would, I would think we.
Barbara had a question about animal houses.
We, we, we definitely, we definitely want some prohibition of delta, 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 or anything like that.
College student rental, ie, animal houses.
You know, it's actually not to do with the minutes of, of the meeting, of last meeting, so. I'm gonna take you off top.
Well, one of the things that was mentioned in the minutes from last meeting reminded me that you were going to do some, uh, presentation or, or request a discussion at the DRB level about, uh, home occupations and so forth. I wondered whether.
They did talk about it, uh, thank you for asking. Um, the consensus was, the, the basic question was, on traffic.
Right.
Uh, volumes, should it be a fixed number? Or should it be more flexible and give the DRB discretion? And some of you were saying, wow, sometimes it's nice to tell the DRB, bright lines, bright lines, follow this. And other times we want, you, you tell me if I'm wrong, I think the consensus was, uh, give us the flexibility, we can handle it.
Okay.
But I mentioned to them that you wanted me to check other towns and how they dealt with it, and they thought that was also a good thing to look into. I haven't done that yet, but.
Okay.
But their basic answer, am I right, Dennis? The basic answer was, it doesn't have to be.
Doesn't have to be.
Sharp lines, we can, we can handle it.
And in the meantime, we'll find out.
Yeah.
What, what other towns may or may not do about it.
What language they use, yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes of July twenty sixth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anyone pose? All right, thank you. Other business, Alex?
Uh, so my quick comment to Don was only gonna be, it, uh, can you put somewhere in the minutes for this meeting that, that the, the last, that, that the August ninth meeting was canceled? Just so that somebody tracking minutes over time gets a little like heads up, hey, they skipped a meeting, no, they, yeah, it was canceled. Um, and then the other announcement is just that the town did file its wetland permit application for the Village North sidewalk project. Have I already told you about this?
Yeah.
Uh, from, so along the east side of Route one sixteen, from the mobile station up to Riggs Road, where the, the access road to the NRG facility. We've been planning a sidewalk there for many, many years, and we got a grant many, many years ago, and it got stuck because it's gonna impact some wetlands, cause the wetlands come right up to one sixteen, and we've been going back and forth with the state on that. Anyways, we finally re- reached consensus and we filed the application. You, you guys get notified of these things, so I just wanted to let you know that we filed the application. If you want more info, I'm happy to let you know, but it's a town project, it's all for the good.
No decision from A and R, just the application.
No, just the application, um, we're, I think, I mean, we're expecting an approval. Um, it is, the sidewalk will impact about seven thousand square feet of wetland and three thousand square feet of wetland buffer.
Do you have to pay an impact fee?
I don't know. I know that there had to be mitigation, and, and Jan Blumstrom, who owns the property around NRG, um, is helping us with that on her property.
Was there a thought of doing a boardwalk or something?
Long time ago there was, but the wetlands office wanted it snugged right up as close to one sixteen as we could, so it wasn't going through the middle of the wetland, less impact, I guess, so. Yeah, boardwalk went out the window, went out the door a while ago, and now we're just close to one sixteen.
So, one other question. Do we know, uh, where the public hearing is on the select board agenda?
I believe it was warned for seven o'clock, the beginning of their meeting, so I believe they will take it up either first thing or very close to first thing on, uh, Thursday.
Thirty first.
Yeah, a week from tomorrow.
And I won't be in town, I know that we're not required to visit, to attend, but I won't be in town that day.
And you are, of course, all welcome. Joe and Maggie and Barbara have been good about going to some of those select board meetings where they talked about it. This is a public hearing where they're not talking about it, they're just listening to public comments. There's no, yes, one of two hearings, the other one tentatively September twenty fifth. It's very possible no one will show up, and they'll just open the hearing and close the hearing. It's possible that, you know, somebody might have some ideas, but we have been kicking this around for so long that if people haven't had something to say, that probably don't have anything left to say. But I'm trying to do front porch more opposed to just tell people.
Before school starts.
Yeah, that's, Tom here in particular said, I don't think people are gonna show up for the August thirty first meeting, even though school will have already started. School starts on the thirtieth. Um, so that second public hearing, he wanted to make sure that was, you know, in, in later September, so they'll, they'll have to.
Okay, thanks.
I have a quick other. Has, has anyone been to Waterbury lately?
Yeah.
As you're coming back onto the interstate, you're coming from this Waterbury Center, going towards the interstate.
So from Cold Hollow Cider and Ben &amp; Jerry's and all that?
No, the other way.
Oh, coming from Waterbury Village.
Yeah, the village, sorry.
You going to that new roundabout?
Well, that, but to the right of the roundabout, there's some interesting houses. They look like they're as wide as a mobile home, but they're two-story. They look like a little fantasy village.
They might be one of these Vermont units.
They're, it's, it's just very interesting, and when talking about, you know, building up and, yeah. Anyway, check it out if you're there sometime.
Will do.
Okay, thanks a lot, everybody.
Yep, thank you.
Are we? We're adjourned.
Yeah, motion to adjourn. Yep.